All right, everybody, we're going to get started. It's Tuesday, August 9th, and we're going to call to order the Carson City School District School Board meeting, and we'll start out with the flag salute. Trustee Hart?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, we have adoption of the agenda for possible action.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll go to item three, superintendent's report. This is for information only. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Cassioppo, members of the board. Good evening. You may have seen a flurry of activity around the schools these last several days. It's been fun to meet new teachers and returning staff as they've been in and out of the buildings. Of particular interest, I'd like for you and also our members of the community to know that our parents will be receiving a mailing from the school district office describing information about our new student information system, Infinite Campus. And that document contains a number that will help the parent register in Infinite Campus so that they'll be able to use information for this new system, much like they did the old one, which was Power School. And if there's any questions about that, we invite our parents to contact their neighborhood school. If they're unsuccessful there, we invite them certainly to contact us at the district office. We look forward to a great start of school, and of course, we'll have some additional information a little bit later in our agenda. So with that, I'll end my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to board reports. Steve? No, Susan? Ron?
No.
Okay. Just for Carson Middle School, I did see that they are having the sneak peek starting next week on the 17th and 18th, so keep your eyes open for when you can come and get your sons, your children's schedule and information.
Great. Thank you. How about Nevada Association of School Boards? Do we have anything there?
Just the nomination forms. Did we do those?
We have not done those yet.
We haven't done those yet?
Those are due?
Monday.
Monday.
All right.
And we all need to sign them.
Okay. So how do we want to, we have to sign them? Do we, we're not prepared to do them tonight, so do we need to come in this week to the district office?
We'd be happy to help however you'd like us to be involved. I did send out a few of the documents that we had prepared previously, so let me know how we can assist.
Okay. I will, I'll get with, if anybody has any nominations they're going to submit, let's get them turned in, and I'll coordinate with Mr. Stokes beyond that. Let's see, moving on to association reports. Seeing none. How about public comment? Is it a chance for you to talk about anything that's not on the agenda that's within our jurisdiction? And does anybody have any public comment? Seeing none, we're going to keep moving along. Item seven is informational update on the 2016 Access Data for the Carson City School District. This is for discussion only, and we have Dr. Laura Austin.
Good evening, President Cassioppo, and members of the board, and school district administration, and the public. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Laura Austin, and I am the Director of the English Learner Program, and I am going to present to you tonight information about our Access 2.0 test results for 2016. You have in your packet, and I'll refer to them when we get to that point, you do have in your packet two sheets that have data points on them. One is an oversized sheet, and one is a smaller one that says WEDA at the top, and I'll refer to those a little later on. So about Access 2.0, what is it? It is an English language proficiency assessment administered to kindergarten through 12th grade English learner students, and they've been identified as English learners through what we call a home language survey, which is completed for all students at the, in the registration process. The test is given annually to WEDA consortium member states, of which Nevada is one, and it's to test the acquisition of academic English. It's an online test administration for 2016. It was the first time it was administered online. It is a four-day test per student, approximately six hours per student, and I tell you that because I want to give you a sense of the rigor that the English learners must endure in this test. I think any one of us, if we were told we were taking a test in a second language that was going to last six hours in over four days, we'd all be hiding under our beds. So the students, they do it with good humor and strong intent, and we get really good results. They're hard workers. It is the test, the testing itself is required by federal and state law. A little bit about our Carson City School District English learners. We had 1,344 kindergarten through 12th grade students take the Access 2.0 test, and we are required to test every student. That is, certainly was highly profiled in No Child Left Behind, but even without No Child Left Behind, that law is still, was always in effect and still is in effect. So we're very meticulous at the school sites in identifying who the students are over the school year, and the testing window, which is February, January through March 6th, January 25th through March 6th, we are extremely fastidious at the school sites, making sure every student gets tested. Eighteen students were administered the Alternate Access Test, and this is a language acquisition test for students who are severely cognitively impaired, and they would be taking the NAW test if they were in grades three through 12 for the state CRT or achievement tests. Just so you know, we have many home languages represented amongst our English learners, but it is predominantly a Spanish-speaking group. You'll see that in there. It's 96% Spanish speakers. And then the other, we put the top five languages, Vietnamese, Tagalog, Punjabi, and Hindi. Those are represented at very minimal, minimal rates, but I don't want to minimize the importance of those families to our community, nor the importance of meeting their students' needs. I just want to give you a sense of the numbers, though. It is predominantly Spanish-speaking population in our town, and that is unusual. That's really, in Washoe, that is not the case, nor Vegas and some of these larger districts. And even some of the rurals, you might see more of a Russian presence, more of a higher Asian presence, so that, this is very much specific to our town. Student count by grade cluster, kindergarten through 12th grade, I just show you the numbers there, which add up to that 1,344. Those numbers vary based on time, you know, really by the week, as students come and go, and certainly, those are probably not the numbers we're going to start off with at the beginning of the year, but it will be somewhere in that vicinity. The purpose and uses of Access, I have two frames on that, because the test, I happen to be very much a fan of this test because it is rigorous and it does give us a lot of information. The test helps students and families to understand the students' level of English and along what we call a developmental continuum, and I'll explain those levels briefly. It serves as one of multiple measures to determine whether students are prepared to exit, and it is a state and federal requirement that students exit in a reasonable amount of time. And that, of course, is to give students, to make sure students are getting plenty of educational opportunity. The test information assists us in determining whether English learners have attained language proficiency to participate meaningfully in content area classrooms without program support. And that word "meaningful" is actually kind of in the law also. It's more of a legalistic kind of thing, but it certainly is also in a practical sense. It informs us as we try to make programs for students, is it meaningful for the student? And that's, that's an important word. It also provides teachers with information that they can use to enhance instruction and learning programs for their English learners. There is a report that is provided to parents, and that same report is also provided to teachers. And through our HQSI courses and at our staff meetings, we train teachers on how to read the report and how to use the information. Few more things. The test provide, the results provide districts with information that will help them evaluate the effectiveness of their language acquisition programming. And our, the test itself meets and exceeds federal requirements for monitoring and reporting progress toward English language proficiency. One of the requirements of the law is that we put a program in place so that students will learn English, but we also have to prove its effectiveness, and we also have to prove that it's so effective that they are progressing in the content areas. So this test helps us to do that. It assists in identifying long-term English learners. Those are students who are in program six years or more, so that instructional interventions can be designed, and that is something that we, as a district, are just starting to track formally, and you'll see more and more of that in the literature as more and more districts are doing that. If a student's in a program beyond six years, there is a reason for that, and the schools need to figure out what that is. It's also an analysis of rate of growth in second language acquisition that serves as a possible criteria for identifying gifted and talented students, just as the student who's in longer than six years is of concern. The student who's acquiring English at an incredibly fast rate, that could be an indicator of high intelligence. And so our GATE program with Valerie Dockry at the helm there has put into the system just, how do I want to say, looking at that as a factor, so it's part of the paperwork. How quickly is the student learning English? The results give us English language proficiency levels, and you'll see that ELP, that's what that stands for, Level 1 entering all the way through Level 6 reaching, and that is stored in our student information system. So oftentimes, unfortunately, we tend to use a shorthand and talk about students as if they're numbers. We'll say, oh, he's a five. Oh, he's a three. So we try not to, but those numbers are very useful for us. They frame, especially as you become familiar with language acquisition, they do frame your, your approach, your instructional approach for kids. So the language proficiency goals are established by the Nevada Department of Education for all districts in the state, and it's a three-pronged goal set. First of all, we need to see that each student is showing sufficient growth through the test results over time. We need to show that a substantive number of students are exiting each year, and that students are exiting in a reasonable amount of time. And students need to show that their language skills are giving them the skills they need to have grade-level academic achievement, again, within a reasonable amount of time. So on the right side, I listed the criteria there. Sufficient growth according to the state is growing .5 on that 1 to 6 scale. So if I'm a 2.5 in third grade, I need to at least be a 3.0 when I test in fourth grade. We find that to be a minimum growth because, you know, if you do the math, it would take somebody 10 years to exit because you need to be a Level 5 to exit. So we like to see accelerated growth. That's kind of a minimum. Also, exiting, in order for a student to exit, they need to get a 5 in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Those are those four days of testing that I mentioned. They need to test at a Level 5 in all four of those language domains, and when you combine the reading and writing, they need to be at a Level 5 in what we call the literacy composite score. So it is a rigorous exit criteria, and I like it that way personally because it's, when a student does exit, it usually means they're ready for independent work at their grade level. And then academic achievement, that needs to be determined still. We're still waiting to see how they'll use S-Back and, of course, exams to, to measure student success in that regard. I imagine what the Nevada Department of Education will do is, in the star system, is they will set goals for sites to be one star all the way up to the four stars. That has not been set. So here's our five-year trend data. If you wanted to take a look at this sheet, I know it's a lot of numbers, but I just want to direct you that it is five different years. You kind of, you read it actually from the right to the left. 2011 is in the right-hand column. We used to give a test called LOS, so you'll see it's an entirely different test. And then in 2012, as you move to the, you're starting off in the right-hand column, as you move to the left, you'll see that it switches over to Access. And then when you get all the way over to 2015, 16, you see it turns to the, we transition to the online test, Access 2.0. And then what this does, and I've shared this data for, well, this is my fourth year in the program now, so for four years, I've shared this data with principals so they can see where their school falls in those three criteria of growth, exit, and achievement. And then at the bottom of the sheet, again, I'm looking at this oversized one, I have given the criteria as a reminder. So if we took a look just to that far-left column, if we look at Al Seelager School, we'll see under Growth that they tested 84 students, and of those stu, well, 84 students had two years of testing, so they could, we could measure growth from year to year, and 70 of them had .5 or higher. And so 83% of their students showed the growth according to state criteria, which is an awesome figure, by the way. If you move over to the right column, you'll see again Al Seelager exit. So how many students in grades K, this is, because you can exit as a kindergartner, K through 5, how many of them got a 5 in all areas and that literacy a 5? They tested 112 students total. Thirty-five exited for an exit rate of 31%. The state's hoping that we get 12%, and it was 31. So that is also awesome. And if you look down, you can see for each site how that, how we excelled in our exit rate and in our growth rate at most sites. And then if you look along the bottom, and I'll show you this in another slide, you'll see that if you look at 2013, when I came on, we had an 8% exit rate for the district. It's that bottom row. And 2014, 15, if you move to the left, out of that 1351, we had a 13.1% exit rate. And then this year, we had an almost 25% exit rate, 24.93, which again, just is an astounding achievement for any school district in any county in the country. So, and the test is rigorous. So we hope to continue that trend, at least hold the line there. If we could exit one quarter of our students every year, in a few years, maybe I wouldn't have a job. So I don't know. Is that good or bad? But we, it truly is commendable to our, our staff.
Laura?
Yes.
Before you leave that page, what about Carson Middle School?
Yes. If you look at the middle schools, we are working hard at the middle schools to implement without taking too much time. I wondered that same question when I came on a few years ago, and what we found was there were some structures that weren't in place. And that's what's interesting about test scores, if they're used well, is it causes you to go deep and say, why? So what we found was students were not being identified and were not being provided the English language instruction during the day. They were being provided a lot of content area support, but they weren't being provided English language courses. So we created those courses a couple of years ago, and what we also found is students coming from fifth grade, we'll have a critical mass that are still reading two, three years below grade level or more. And so we created reading classes. We're going actually into our second year. Last year, we created a reading class. We adopted a curriculum. We trained the ESL teachers. We've had tremendous support from the administration in creating these classes. It's not always easy with master schedules and moving students and changing their, their courses. So with that said, we're in a lot, we're in a, what I would call a growth mode at the middle schools, and we're doing a lot of creation. So looking at the scores, if you look at Carson High, you'll see they had a 31% exit rate this year, and the year before, they had a 14% exit rate. So hats off to Carson High. I would say, well, I can tell you, over 30 of those students were ninth graders, and the test was in January. So what we, what I'm telling my staff, my team, is that this is also a shared celebration with the middle schools, because the students were at the high school for four and a half months, they took a very rigorous test, and they exited. So they were at the point of exiting as eighth graders, but it didn't happen. They just, you know, it just didn't happen at that time. So there's some positives in there, I think, that are hidden, in that the students are getting well-prepared, but what we're finding is they need some literacy. We're building, we're amplifying, amplifying the literacy program and including the writing and the reading at the middle schools. We want those students to exit sooner. We're finding we have a lot of long-term English learners at the middle school, so they'll, they've been in since first grade, perhaps. They get to that six-year mark, now they're in seventh grade, and they're still in the program. So we have a lot to look at there. It's, it's those tough years. And as, as we all know, as they're moving up to a different school, the curriculum gets more difficult. Now they have seven teachers. It's, it's a real complex situation for English learners as they go up into the secondary. So, great question, though. We are looking very seriously at that.
Laura? Yeah. Let's, you know, I appreciate what you've said and the concerns here, and, you know, this may perhaps not be the time since we're looking at the overall program, but I thought a few years ago, we kind of got into ESL pretty seriously. In fact, there's information otherwise in this packet about things, and, you know, I guess I'm really kind of surprised that all the other schools are where they are, and yet Carson Middle School, I mean, that, this isn't just a 20% fluctuation from the other, I mean, this is almost like you don't want to be there.
Um, yes.
So anyway, let's, but as I say, I think it's something that you're going over the overall thing, but I guess sometime, sometime perhaps, we can get an understanding on what's being changed specifically to, to improve Carson Middle School.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay?
Absolutely.
One more question since we're on that. I was looking at Carson Middle School, too, but then I looked down at Eagle Valley, and it looks like-
It's commensurate.
It's gone, it's gone the opposite way, from 11 to 8.75. But I'm noticing when I look at the 1112, the LAS test versus the Access, is there kind of a transition between the tests? Because it seems like the LAS numbers were pretty good.
The LOS test was not rigorous.
Okay.
Yeah, it just was not. It did not have the reading and writing component, and it simply was not as rigorous. And the speaking was a, it was a face-to-face speaking test, and again, just not as in-depth and not as rigorous. What the Access test does is it tests the students in the content areas, so they have to demonstrate proficiency in speaking about math, speaking about English language arts, social studies, and science. So it's an interesting test, a really very interesting test. So how do we use the data? We were just talking about that a little bit in terms of the middle school. We use the data as, in the English Learner Program to decide on services for students by state law and also by our school district board policy. The teachers have to have, excuse me, the students who are in program, so they have not exited yet, they must have a TESL-endorsed teacher for at least one period a day for English language arts instruction specifically. And then for math, science, and social studies, they must have a teacher who's gone through our six-day HQSI program training, and that's 45 hours of training. So we, we do something called a service report, and our ESL teachers spend a lot of time carrying that out, assigning the students in the classes, working with the principals, working with the counselors if it's a secondary level. So based on need, students are provided teacher, teacher instructional services, and then the students, the services are actually entered and monitored via a software platform that we use called Elevation, which is pretty awesome. And so we actually get a printout, my, I have a wonderful assistant, Samantha Hefner, and we can see for 1,344 students, I can see every teacher they have and what their training is. And if we don't have a, if we have a student who has a teacher who hasn't been trained, then we need to know why, and we'll contact the ESL teacher or the administrator to remind them that that needs to be rectified. And then monitoring students after they exit, by state law, they have to be monitored for two years for academic success. And again, we do that through the Elevation platform. It's pretty slick, and we do that quarterly, and we send, we, meaning the ESL teachers, send out a communique to the classroom teacher to ask how the students are doing, and if we get a report that the student needs more help, then interventions are planned. And then we use the test scores to plan supplemental programming, in-class support, before and after-school programming. We have a lot of that at the different sites. And then summer school, elementary and secondary. Summer school is planned for the students. English fluency equals academic success. If we were to, if I were to show you the list of Carson High School graduates from 2016, this last June, you would see that about 20% of them were former English learners. And you would see that many of them are in the top 20% of the class, many of them are in the top 10%, and some of them are at the very tippy-top of their class. So this is what I like about the Access 2.0. When students exit in our district, they do very, very well. So when we see a 30% exit rate, that bodes extremely well for all the children in the district. And you can just see, there's those exit rates again, 14, 15, 16, going left to right. And that's district-wide. And then I just, I would like to put a shout-out to, to our staff. We have English learner teachers at each site, and I've listed them there for you. You might know some of them. And then down at the bottom, I would just like to give a shout-out to our TESL-endorsed teachers. You know, we have Tanya Carone that does an ongoing TESL endorsement program, continually has 16, 20, 25 teachers in a course. She provides a course each quarter. And right now, district-wide, we have about 238 of our 400 or so teachers who are TESL endorsed. We have biology teachers at the high school who are TESL endorsed. We have elementary, we have middle, and it's, it's, I think it's really one of the reasons we're seeing more and more success, is the teachers' expertise in that area and their interest. And that's what, oh, you know, I wanted to show you just, I didn't make a slide of this, but I wanted to show you another type of report we get, and that's this sheet here, and that is the frequency report. I have given it to you for the district, but you could actually see in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, how many students are a 1, a 2, a 3, a 4, a 5, or a 6 in each of those areas. We get that at the district level, but each school site also gets it at the school level, so they can see exactly how their kindergartners did, exactly how their first graders did, and it helps to plan for instruction for the following school year. Yeah. Are any other questions for me? Yes?
When we, sorry, did you? When we were talking about kids exiting out of the program, I'm assuming the earlier we can get them to exit out, the better success they're going to have as they go on. Do we have a, a goal that we're trying to get to, like get them out before middle school?
It's that sixth year. It's that long-term English learner. So now we have more and more students going to pre-K, so if we count that year, pre-K, Kinder, 1, 2, 3, 4, we would say by fifth grade, we want them exiting, and that's information I have shared with the principals. So when we were talking about middle school, one of the things that the middle school is inheriting is, you know, is these long-term English learners. And so we're trying to impart onto the elementary schools a sense of urgency, and, I mean, elementary school, you don't have to say that twice. They pick up right up on that in their PLCs to look at how many years, not just the scores, but how many years has the student been in the program? And so in, in the future, actually, starting this last spring, we provide, my assistant and I provide data sheets to the schools. Certainly, they get these reports, but then we provide extra data sheets to them, and we have put in there the length of time in the program so that they can start tracking that. Yeah, it's, it's almost, you can set your watch by it. If they reach year six and they haven't exited, they're probably going to reach a year seven, they're probably going to reach a year eight. There's something that needs to be explored there. Yeah.
Just curious, why is Montessori in our data?
Well, because, and I actually will let Mr. Stokes or Mrs. Keema answer that question. The charter school laws require that we report them out because they are part of our-
They're part of our district.
District. District.
We don't include them in a lot of other-
No, but in this particular data, we'll get information form on other assessment data as well.
Yes, yes, yes. And they do, they do send a representative to our trainings and I oversee, I don't oversee their testing, but I oversee the gathering of their tests and I'm in communication with them quite a bit. Great question. Well, I would like to actually move on and introduce our next person, if I might. One of our interventions, as you saw up there, is summer school. And this year, we did plan an English learner, an elementary English learner summer school. And we were fortunate enough to have Cheryl Riquetta, who is an implementation specialist at Mark Twain. She served as summer school administrator. So President Cassiope, when you're ready, she is going to present information to you on what we did for summer school and how that's helping to accelerate, we hope, accelerate students' exit rate.
Yeah, we have her down on the next item, so we're going to bring her up right away.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Sue, before we start, on the topic of TESL and HQSI, is our goal to get all teachers TESL and HQSI or?
So in the second year new, in our new hire program, in the second year, that's when we provide, provide high-quality sheltered instruction, instruction to our new hires so that it's just a systemic piece of our district to provide them with those extra tools to work with our ESL students. And then as far as the TESL, that is, we are expected to put that as a preferred in a, in our position announcements, that we expect TESL-endorsed folks to apply as a preferred method, not required, but that is a way for our teachers to earn credits, to move forward on the pay scale, as well as credentialing, as well as to further their knowledge in another deeper fashion.
Okay. So we're going to move on to, anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, we're going to jump on item eight, since we kind of got there already. So informational update on the 2015-16 summer school program in the Carson City School District with a focus, excuse me, on the elementary English Language Learner ELL program. Again, for discussion only, and Cheryl.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Riquetta and I was the administrator for our summer school program. It was a Read-By-Three English Language Learner Summer School program and it's something that we haven't done before. So it was very, the process that we did, I'm going to share with you, it was a very exciting process that we went through and it was wonderful that, what we were able to offer to these students. We had a couple of goals for our summer school program. The first one was that we wanted to extend the school year by 16 days for our English Language learners. And it was invited for kindergarten through third grade because those are the students that are most affected by their Read-By-Three. And the reason for that is we wanted to give them some extra time that they need in order to become proficient in English, including reading, writing, listening, and speaking. But we had an emphasis on reading because this was a Read-By-Three program. In addition to that, we were hoping, our goal was to prevent that summer slide, to keep them from going backwards. And so that when they come into school, starting in a couple of weeks, in August, that they will, that they will be able to continue right on with the standards and their new grade level without having to go through the review and the things that oftentimes happens over that summertime break. Because research has shown that when you give students that extra time that they need, especially ELL students, it will mitigate that summer learning loss. So this next slide here shows you some successful reading data from this past school year. And as you can see in this data, and part of the reason why this program was for English Language learners was that there is a gap between where all students are showing proficiency at 60% versus our ELL students who came in at 45% in the fourth quarter. And so because of that, we wanted them, again, to give them the extra time. We know these students need the time, they need time to become more proficient to practice, with the English, with the reading, the writing, listening, and speaking, and this was one way to hopefully help support them. So funding for the, oh, yes. Sure.
Just out of curiosity, can you explain why we see that reduction? I mean, I can guess, but why we see the reduction in the actual comprehension or whatever through the quarters from first quarter at 60 and on, and then winding up at 45? Why do we see that?
This is the reading data for the entire district and there are, there are some different reasons for that. Part of this reading data is based on our map, our map data that student, that all students take. And so when you'll see, especially like in, at the end of the first quarter, when it go, well, first quarter went down a little bit, but in the second quarter, we had map scores. So first quarter, we didn't have any map data that went into that. Second quarter, we did. Third quarter, it pretty much maintained the same because we didn't change mastery too much in, in our reading because we didn't have a second data point in order to look at when figuring out mastery. And then fourth quarter, unfortunately, some of our map data came in a little bit lower than, than what we had anticipated or what we'd hoped for. And so again, it's just data that we're going to be using in the future to help drive instruction to bring those scores up. So the summer school program, it was funded by a $400,000 grant. It was Read-By-Three grant that received from the state. We use those funds to, to purchase all of our curriculum materials, to pay for all of our staffing. We had transportation for students. We had bus services for those that lived in a bus zone, as well as transportation to the Boys and Girls Club. And then we also provided professional development that we pay the teachers for in order to be prepared for summer school. That professional development piece was very important because it was a quick 16 days and we wanted to get the most benefit for our students. So we invited all English Language learners in grades kindergarten through third grade, which was a total of 719 students. Out of those 719, we had 438 enrollment across the districts. Each school, each school had their own summer school site, which was really important because we know that students, you know, they want to be able to come to their home school. And we want, we wanted to increase enrollment as much as we could and also keep the students coming for the entire 16 days. So that's just a breakdown of the grade levels in each site and the number of students. And as you would imagine, sites such as Empire, where we have a higher English Language learner population, had more students and so on. For our staff, we were able to hire 38 TESL-endorsed teachers. These were certified teachers that are already teaching in the district. And then we also had myself and then we had Sharon Hallinan that worked side-by-side with me to be a support as our English Language consultant. In addition to the teachers, each site also had one bilingual ESL paraprofessional that worked mainly, their position was to help, help with the parents, help with the students. They also made phone calls every day for those students that weren't here, that were absent, so that we could get them coming back to the summer school. And, and then they also pushed into the classroom to support the teachers. In addition to that, we had one food service worker at each school because we provided breakfast for each of the students every morning. Mark Twain had a special needs student, so we also had an EMT on-site because it was a medical issue, as well as a one-on-one paraprofessional. If you could look there, that has the student-to-teacher ratio. And as you can see, we were really fortunate when having those 38 TESL-endorsed teachers that we were able to keep our ratios low, the highest only being 16 to 1, and it ranged anywhere down to 8 to 1. So some sites had, the sites that had the smaller enrollment of students, of course, had the smaller number of teachers and so on. The curriculum that we used was the National Geographic Reach Curriculum, which is what we're using in the schools right now for our English Language learners. However, what was new with this program is that we also brought on the online piece of it that we hadn't used before. So the program itself focuses on language acquisition through reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And then we had a technology component where students can work on phonics games, there was, there were e-assessments, there was a really neat, it was called Comprehension Coach, where the students could read stories and answer comprehension questions, as well as read the story back to themselves and they could hear it. And they could play it back and listen to how their fluency sounds and gave them the word per minute. And then it also gave them the words that they missed if they could practice it. So, and the goal with that was teachers were using that at least once or twice a week and then looking at the rates the students had and then working with them to help improve Professional development, as I said, was provided to all of our teachers. We had, in April, we had a full day of training to learn and understand the Reach curriculum and how to effectively teach it. And then we also had another three-hour training as summer school got closer that kind of went over all the nuts and bolts of summer school, but also more importantly, went over the 15 WEDA essential actions, which are effective instructional strategies that teachers should be using when teaching English Language learners. What's really neat about this professional development is that not only was it great for them to receive for summer school, but it's something they're going to be able to carry over into their classrooms. During summer school, the students came Monday through Thursday, and on Fridays, we had grade-level PLCs, which I don't think is something that's probably been done before in summer school. It was an opportunity for the teachers to get together in their grade levels. They, they received some further training based on classroom observations that we had seen. They, we were able to go over data, able to talk about effective instructional strategies. And then after that, teachers were able to take those discussions and go back to their sites and plan for the following week of instruction. So just kind of to give you an idea of some of the nuts and bolts of summer school, in order to get students registered, we had a parent information night at each one of the school sites in March and April. And at that point, we explained what the summer school program was, what it entailed, and it gave parents the opportunity to also enroll. In addition to that, registrations kept going all the way up until, we were still taking the first couple of days of summer school. And the teachers at all the sites did a wonderful job, especially our, the ESL departments at each site, did a great job on contacting those parents and, and really trying to encourage them to, to register so that we could get as many as we could and to be as successful as we were. Summer school itself began on June 6th and was held Monday through Thursday from, in the morning, from 8:15 to 11:30, and we, it was held for four weeks. Transportation, as I said before, was provided to and from summer school, which was really important for those, those students that, that normally ride the bus so that we could get them in as well and they weren't excluded. We also provided transportation to the Boys and Girls Club. Breakfast was offered to each of the students in the morning, which we know is extremely important to, to get them off to a good start, especially since some of them may not have that at home. And then we also, through the e-assessments and the National Geographic program, we drove our instruction using pre- and post-test. So we did a Unit 6 out of that program and we did a pre-test so teachers could see where their students were at the beginning, to kind of know where, what was the most important with the 16 days. They really wanted to focus in on the areas that the students were struggling with most. This was our assessments results at the end and the present, and you have this in your packet. The, basically, this tells you the percentage of students that showed an increase from the pre-test to the post-test, which was only a quick 16, 16 days, four-week period. But the other thing to remember too, is that we're also going to be looking at, because the, the goal of the summer school program was to prevent that summer slide. So we're going to be looking at the map data in the spring compared to where they are in the fall when they take it again, when school starts, so that we can look to see if that, you know, make sure they're not going backwards, because that was what our true goal was. Then second and third grade. So this is just some, a few pictures and then, I don't know, the middle one's a little, quick little 30-second video. If we can, can we click on that? Just to give you a sample.
Kids can go swimming on a sunny, hot day at Lake Tahoe. I wear sunscreen on sunny days because I might get sunburned. I want to go to the beach with my family. Nice job.
Just a little sample of some of the things that the kids said. Overwhelmingly, I would say that we got a lot of really positive feedback from the students and from the teachers. Teachers were saying that the day would end and the kids were like, no, we don't want it to go. Or at the end of summer school, they wanted to go longer, which was what we really wanted to hear. And overwhelmingly, the, the teachers were happy teaching summer school. Many of them expressed wanting to come back and do it again next year. So, do you have any questions for me?
Is this grant funding just for this year or is there funding in place for next summer as well?
I do believe that the summer school will be held again next summer.
Going piggyback on the, the data that we had before, will you be able to follow those students to see if they exit?
Yes, we're, I'm going to be, I'm going to be bringing up, we'll be bringing up all their map data when they come to see how they do. And then for exiting, yeah, I imagine that Mrs. Austin probably will be looking at that, yes.
So you'll be able to tell if that, that the summer school works and which ones should be targeted?
And then watching too, to see, Susan Kima here, seeing that, do they come back for summer school next year or just kind of see, watch that progression? Because Dr. Austin and her team have been really going through our programming with a fine-tooth comb, but for some of this, it involves grade instruction and these students need time. They just need some additional time with grade instruction.
Jose Delphin, for the record, I just wanted to thank Cheryl for all your hard work this summer. I'm sure you probably lost a little vacation time. Hopefully, you got some back. Also want to thank Dr. Austin. I want to call her tenaciously tenacious, T squared. She has really kept the pulse of ESL and our program for kids and also for our district moving along. I know I meet with her frequently. Not only is she dedicated to students, but also for staff. One thing she didn't mention that she does really well at is, you know, making sure our ESL peers are out there informed and keeping the effort moving. So a lot of the credit here is to Dr. Austin, I believe. So thank you, Laura.
Any additional questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move on to item nine, discussion on possible action to approve staff's recommendation for award of request for proposals, number CCSD 17-VS, for equipment, software, and installation of video surveillance systems to PowerCom Solutions Incorporated at all schools and other district facilities for amount not to exceed a price of $547,071.19 for an initial term of three years with possible one-year renewals for two years, beginning August 9th, 2016, ending August 8th, 2019. And we have Mark Kornick and Ann Wiswell.
Thank you, President Cassiope, members of the board and executive staff. Mark Kornick, Director of Operations, for the record. And we have-
Ann Wiswell, Risk Manager. Thank you.
We are here before you today, we, to bring and discuss and for possible action, the recommendation from staff to award this RFP that we did for equipment, software, and installation of video surveillance systems to PowerCom Solutions Incorporated. We provided, in your packet, a summary of the process and, and, and the RFP itself. Also provided a tabulation. So with that, do you have any questions?
Okay, Steve, we'll start with you.
Thanks. Mark, out of curiosity, I, I assume it's so, this isn't PowerCom's first rodeo when it comes to installing video surveillance in schools?
That is correct.
So you're very happy with their background and their experience?
Yeah, yeah, I am. Ann's a little bit more of the expert. She did a lot more of the building of the scope and working on it, so.
And I, I think it's important to mention too, we have video surveillance in the schools now.
Yes.
It's very outdated. We kind of have five-and-a-quarter-inch floppies in a digital world, I think might be the best way to describe it. So this isn't like a brand-new, hey, let's start this thing. I mean, it's in there. And I had a chance to sit in on the, on the bids and whatnot and we, we had a lot of folks show up and it got weeded down to two and they, they both had pretty impressive demonstrations. And this was not the most expensive. I mean, this was a quality system at, from what we learned, at a very reasonable price in terms of video surveillance systems.
Just, what, what, what video surveillance does this include? Is it the classrooms, the hallways, the exterior, the buildings, the buses? What does it involve?
So the system varies from site to site. At our high school, we currently have 55 cameras, both exterior and interior. At our high school, we currently have 55 cameras, both exterior and interior. At all of our elementary schools, those are exterior cameras only. We will be expanding camera locations as we go from site to site. The existing system will be completely removed. Some of the cameras that we currently have are IP cameras, which is the new type of technology that we are installing, and we will be able to repurpose some of those cameras at different sites. But we'll be starting with the high school, with both an exterior and interior installation. The system on the buses is a completely separate system.
When you say exterior, does that mean the parking lots?
Yes, the parking lots, but also some of our entryways.
Football fields and things like that?
At the high school, yes. Yes.
What is the timeframe for the installation?
So we're hoping to begin on the high school this September, and they have indicated that that would take them, what, about a month? They thought they could do the whole district in three months, but we have existing construction projects that will cause some delays. We'll have to coordinate those projects.
So is the equipment, and just out of curiosity, is the equipment then leased or is it purchased?
Purchased.
Any additional questions?
Just to be a bit picky. So obviously, they have a plan for phasing out old equipment and installing new equipment, such that there will never be any uncovered period of time.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ann, could you...
Yeah.
Jose Delphin, for the record. Ann, could you describe some of these really newer cameras and how much more area they cover than they used to in the old days?
Yes, yes. So the camera technology has really advanced significantly over the past five years specifically. Most of our system is about nine years old. We have analog cameras. We have some IP cameras at the high school, but essentially, we have what would be very similar to what you might have at your home with a camera hooked, an analog camera hooked up to a digital video recording device, a DVR. So each school has an appliance, a DVR, connected to cameras. And these new systems are all highly networked. They are an Internet Protocol system that is installed on a server-based system. We have to run all new cabling for the cameras, and the servers are those digital video recording devices. Those will just go away. The cameras will now trunk to the server rooms. And the cameras themselves are just phenomenal. I mean, the zoom capability that we will have currently, when we try to pull footage for a security incident, for instance, in a parking lot or something like that, oftentimes when we zoom in, the folks in the video become very pixelated, and it's almost impossible to make an ID using that video footage. New camera technology allows us to zoom in from quite a distance away and still retain quite a bit of clarity in the image. The cameras themselves, there are a variety of different cameras that we'll be installing. There are little tiny, low-profile cameras that can go into hallways that are almost undetectable. Exterior cameras, where we currently have what's called a PTZ or a pan-tilt zoom, will be replaced with a single unit that has four cameras inside of it, and it's like a 360 unit. Some of these cameras can be connected to your PA system so that if motion is detected, it sets off a voice-activated warning that your presence has been detected, you're being filmed if you want to go that direction.
Especially in the football field.
Right, right. So just a lot of features that are coming along with these new surveillance systems. They're almost always sold as a packaged security suite, so you're not looking at just your surveillance system, you're looking at integrating your intrusion alarm system, your fire alarm system, your video surveillance system, and your access control. So if at some point we want to go keyless and go to a card-key entry system, for instance, this software already has the module. We just turn it on, and we can go to a keyless access control system, and it's all integrated.
So if we're purchasing it, why does it say an amount not to exceed a price of whatever for an initial term of three years with a possible one-year renewal for two years?
That's a licensing renewal.
Oh, it's not financial?
That's a software license.
So we have to renew the software every year?
Correct. We own the equipment, but the software will require a three-year maintenance agreement.
Do we have any additional questions? Seeing none, it's an action item. Do we have anybody that wants to make a motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the request for a proposal, Carson City School District 17-VS, to PowerCom Solutions for Equipment, Software, and Installation of Video Surveillance Systems at all schools and other district facilities for the amount not to exceed $547,071.19 for a three-year term with possible one-year renewals for two years, beginning August 9, 2016, and ending August 8, 2019.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Any comments or concerns from the public? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Item 10, informational update on the Carson City School District Race to the Top Grant. This one's for discussion only, and we have Dr. Steve Perdara.
Good evening, President Cassioppo, members of the board. It's nice to be with you today, starting our fifth year of our Race to the Top project. So it's hard to believe that five years have gone by. So I had an opportunity, and I wanted to begin with this, and wanted to begin with the fact that when we started this project five years ago, we submitted an application that we thought that it was possible to build personalized learning in a traditional school setting. And we were selected as the top application in the country as a result. I can now report to you that we actually do have a personalized learning system in place in our secondary schools, and we actually did live up to the expectations that were set forth by the U.S. Department of Education for our school district. It is an amazing accomplishment. We are at the very beginning stages of driving the Ferrari, so I'll give you that example is, okay, we have the keys to the Ferrari, now what do we do with it? And this is where we actually can begin the process of tracking student progress individually for every learning target, for every course that they're taking. So I'll talk a little bit about where we are in the specifics of the system, and then what'll come next this year, and the expansion of our system, of course, to the elementary level in the areas of science and mathematics. Okay, so although it's a little bit difficult to see, I wanted to bring just one key data source, and it is kind of the biggest barrier for graduation is the credit accrual for our district. So if you can kind of bear out those numbers a little bit, you'll see that we've made significant increases at the middle school over the timeframe, and that we have made increases at the high school as well. Now, this does not account for the credits that are being earned in the online credit recovery that's going on during the day and the summer school components. So this is without that at the high school. So those percentages are at the classroom level. So I have to really commend both Mr. Zona and Mrs. Fuson and their teams, because even though those numbers aren't in here, that you can see them, where there's, I believe there was well over 300 credits that were accrued in those credit recovery components that aren't shared here. So we have to resolve this pass rate. We have to get better. We have to move this number up. But intrinsically, we are finding ways to move kids to get those credits, and so this next slide will help show that, and those credits are there. Again, I apologize, I thought this slide would look bigger. But essentially, you can see in your packets, I think, hopefully, do you have that or not? Do we have it? You know what? I'm thinking that they don't have it because it's today's PowerPoint. Janice, is there a way we can...
There's a little piece around here.
Okay. Yeah, sorry. I'm really sorry, because these are good numbers. So I'll just kind of highlight some of these with the... Oh, there we go. That's perfect, Janice. Thank you so much. That's exactly what we needed, a great technology person to save the day. So you can see what's happening for us in terms of credit accrual, and let's start with Pioneer first. So 14 and 15, when we first were attacking the credit accrual rates, you can see that 68% of the students that were freshmen at Pioneer High School earned up to five credits. That was it. Whereas, and then only five students earned seven or more credits. So we can see that those numbers are going up for our kids earning those credits. It's still not as high as we want, earning the seven credits, but they're heading in the right direction. So you can see that the credit accrual rate is going up. That's true in the 10th grade as well. Again, you can see that where it says 70% of the students had zero to 12 credits, and then 63%, and so those numbers are going up as you're going down the page. So Pioneer, if you can slide up, Janice, just a little bit. Oh, that's great. So you can see that even when we get to Pioneer, 88% of our students this year earned 22 and a half credits. So that is a big turnaround for Pioneer High School. The numbers are very strong at Carson High as well. You can see that if we start at the bottom here, 97% of our students... Now, you'll see there's not a comparison here. That's because this was a new system for us, and we didn't track those seniors from the previous year. We track them now. So the 11th grade year, again, you can see there's this pattern that we are improving. So we went from 57% to 59%. We went from 62 to 64%, not at the rate that we need to, but we are improving. So more kids are earning credits that they need to be able to graduate. So we'll have a big jump in our graduation rate next year, of course, because the proficiency exam is out for two years. So it's really credit accrual is the barrier to graduation. So again, we also, we'll have to wait and see how End of Course comes, but I have very good feelings about how End of Course is going to work for us at this point. We don't know for sure, but with the state, the state's doing work on that now, and at the preliminary cut rates that those folks are talking about, it looks promising for us. So we'll just have to wait and see until they finalize those numbers for us. All right. So our Race to the Top model is really the unit model. And so when we talk about this at the elementary level, we're beginning the development of our science project, and we're at the pilot and the rollout stage. Many of you know that. So the first part comes, you develop your curriculum, your units of study, then your common assessments, and then we start using Mastery Connect to move forward. Now, the elementary schools were ahead in this process of learning Mastery Connect. They already have begun to use it, so using it in the system will move quickly for them. It's not as new. So they're at the pilot and the rollout stage. Middle school, they're in the full implementation stage. So when we talk, when you asked Mrs. Austin earlier about our pass rates for our ESL students, what we'll be able to look at this year is actually learning target mastery for those ESL kids, and we'll be able to disaggregate the data and see in their math, in their science, early if they're making progress. And if they're not, we can intervene early, which is the first time we've been able to look at that disaggregated out by individual students. So we have opportunity to do that, the middle school level. And at the high school level, same concept, it's the development of the components. Now, middle school, remember, they've had pilot, they've had practice, they've updated their system, and they're feeling good about where their tests are. So now it's really about teaching and learning, and that's their focus. The high school, they're at the pilot stage of their, they're still updating a little bit their assessments and their curriculum. They learned a lot from last year, they're updating, we're going to start the year with a strong program. We still might need to do a little bit of cleanup. We'll just have to wait and see. We've got to look at our data, and of course, data and other pieces to tell. So we're sharing with you the playbook. So what we found, or what we learned along the process, was there still wasn't a really deep understanding of all of our members of our organization, of what all the pieces are and what they look like in the classroom. And so to be able to do that, we wanted to publish a map, a roadmap, for everyone. And so that's what the playbook does for us. It lays out for every member of our organization what the expectations are for the classroom teaching of the unit, and what the role of the administrator is, what the role of the student is, because they're expected to be active members of the learning experience. And I think we've talked about it, but we've never really laid it all out. And so really, it is here, and it really defines the role of the teacher, the role of the student, the role of the administrator in that, and kind of all those critical pieces. And we're beginning the process, we'll actually begin tomorrow, with our middle school administrators leading or facilitating a discussion around the playbook and supporting our other two levels in the rollout of this document, but also the implementation of the plan. Everything is, these three components are essential. That is the basis to personalized learning. Is everyone clear, or do they have the same model of the curriculum, the same, in other words, we're based on the unit study, right? Same assessments and Mastery Connect to be able to track the learning targets? Those three pieces have to all be in place, or we can't have personalized learning. If they are in place and they're being used by everyone, then we all have a common understanding of, this is what students are to know and do, and this is their progress that is being made by learning target. Again, this is a small slide, but essentially, I'll just work my way around it. It's okay, I can say these. So here, this is the partnership between the teacher and the student. So we've talked about this many times, but it's probably good to reinforce it. Thank you, Janice. You win again. All right. So the teacher and the student is, they have to both be clear about the learning expectations. So you saw in their, that description of the teaching and learning relationship. So it's really important that our teachers really are clear, that our students know the learning pathway, and then know the progress they're making along the way. That's true also of our site administrator. So now this is where their work is going to change significantly this year for our secondary administrators, okay? Before, we were looking at what mastery of learning targets were like. Now, we're really going to look. We're actually going to say, all right, as an administrator, you're working with your math teacher who's teaching, let's say, Algebra I. We need to know, first off, do the kids understand the learning target? So when we walk in, we want to ask those kids, do they know it? Secondly, is the data showing that they're mastering it? And as a supervisor, you're going to be looking for that. You're going to be asking questions. So instead of looking, in our old system, traditional system, you'd go in and you'd watch for engagement. You would see, do you think kids are there? Do you see, what are the activities the teacher's doing? Now, they're going to be looking deeper. They're going to be seeing, all right, is it an effective lesson? And are kids making progress? That's the key. So it's really looking deeper, diving deeper, supervising in a deeper way to see if students are meeting those expectations. And this will be challenging. We're all going to be learning in this. I can't tell you, I wish I could say, oh, it's going to be starting tomorrow, and it's going to be perfect. No. We're all going to go together, and we're going to say, all right, what does the data look like? What does it mean? How do we write our reports? How do we coach around this? How do we make sure kids get it? So really, we are handed the keys to the Ferrari, and we're driving around the parking lot, but our parents haven't let us out on the freeway yet, which is probably a good thing. All right? So then, what is the story from teacher to teacher? That's different now, too, because now the data's piece is really in play. So all the Algebra I teachers now will walk into their PLC with the same data, same reports, really based on learning targets. Again, middle school at the highest level. High school groups are beginning the process of those conversations, okay? So then we can think about working with the department. So that means that... One teachers now will walk into their PLC with the same data, same reports, really based on learning targets. Again, middle school at the highest level, high school groups are beginning the process of those conversations. Okay? So then we can think about working with the department. So that means that the department can then look at, all right, let's look at our Algebra One data. What is it telling us? Does that mean kids are prepared for geometry? How do we know? What evidence do we have? So we can begin looking at that. And that's in biology, and in English, and in science. All of it, all of it fits. Social studies, and even in, in all the electives. That is, that is this piece that they can begin looking at. So the work of the school support team, so we've talked to you about the SST. Remember, at first, it was about building curriculum and assessments and supporting teachers in this initial change of the learner-centered model. Well, now, it's going to be about getting those reports built and beginning to look at the student data. Are students meeting mastery of the learning targets? And then from school to school. So Dan and Lee are working on their 90-day plans. Their 90-day plans are all going to be almost mirror images of one another. There may be some slight variations, but ultimately, they're building the learner-centered model with the same 90-day plan and supporting it and working together as a team to make sure that all the teachers at the middle school level are able to do that. And then, as we move forward, the high school, I anticipate, well, that will happen for them as well. They've still got some growing together to do before that can happen. And then elementary, our 90-day plans are going to begin to take shape, very similar to our middle school plans and our high school plans, because they are beginning to add the components of the learner-centered model. So we'll be tracking the progress of the build of each, each of those components. And we'll be sharing those with you moving forward. So district support team, how does our role change? Okay, so our role changes as well. So when I'm coaching Lee or working with Lee or Dan, I'm going to be sitting with them, looking, okay, you're supervising math. Let's look at your math data. What does it tell us? What are some really good examples of teachers making progress? What data do you have? What things do I, can I support you with? And the same thing will happen with these guys as they work in their supervision, because if you look at the data that's required for NEPF for administrators, it's this model. If we implement this model well with fidelity, teachers are going to score really high on the NEPF, and our administrators are going to score high as well. And our students are going to, most importantly, that's what we're here for, is that our students are going to score really highly. So again, it's really, if, in our district, if you look at the history of SFA and where we adopted SFA and looked at the data, the way we looked at SFA, we now are trying to do that with everything that we do. So we're expanding that same philosophy of utilizing data to move all learners. And really, for the first time, I can stand before you and say that we have the opportunity, and I really can, and I've said it to you before, but I really can say it now heartfelt, that we will change the educational opportunities for a generation of students in our district now, right now, this coming year. All right, next. Is that the last one, Janice?
That's the last one.
All right. Made it through, and I was quick. So are there, you've, you see our plan. We're going to roll out, give our teachers, even in our students, opportunity to learn about their responsibilities over this next few months. And then we're going to continue to go back and grow our components. Do you have any questions for us? Oh, one, I do have one thing to share. We are up for a research project by the U.S. Department of Education. They're considering us, and we'll know within 30 days if we've been selected as one of the most promising districts in the country for implementation of personalized learning. So we'll let you know how that comes out. Yeah, let's cross our fingers. Yep.
So you say we're in year five. Do we have years after this that you're still projecting other changes, or is this pretty much?
So what I would say is, this is a never-ending project, because what will happen now is, first, we build the system, but now it's about the students that are in it. So as we gather data, we're going to identify particular areas that kids aren't doing well, and we have to adjust to meet the needs of those kids. And notice that, remember, and I've talked to you before about our curriculum being updated each year. So every semester, our curriculum will update. So we should always be able to keep up as our world changes. Our curriculum should change with our world. So the way our system is in place now with our people and the way that we're updating, we should always be able to keep up. So as we get better and better, our kids should, performances should go up. We should be able to adjust.
So when you talk about people, what do we have to look at for budget-wise for next year to keep the movement going forward?
If I could preface that by saying, I was part of a meeting, Dr. Perdare, Mrs. Kima, both high school principals, some key individuals. It was probably one of the most exciting meetings, and I go to a lot of meetings I've ever had. And, and I can say that truthfully, because what happened in that meeting is we said, when do we intercede in a student's academic career if they're not doing well? And we have the ability, we have the tool at the very first semester to say to a ninth-grade student, you only earned, you know, two credits or half of a credit, whatever it is. We can intervene immediately and start taking action. And we've all been in Carson City School District for a long enough history of time that when we let those students go for three, four, five semesters, not earning enough credits, and then being up against the wall when it comes time to graduate, we're no longer going to be in that situation. It's really exciting for me. And so, Trustee Wilkie, when you say, how much does this cost? We are, we are meeting already and taking steps to hone our system in such a way that we can provide the type of support that we've seen so far in the, in the Race to the Top program, but not at the, the development stage, more at the maintenance stage. And so we don't expect that we'll need the exact same number and, and that it took to go through and to remap and to rebuild all the curriculum and the assessments and all that work. We hope that now we're in the stage where we are maintaining that. And so we're, we're auditing our programming. We're looking where we can maintain some of these positions, but, but we really are looking at that. And so while I can't tell you today what exactly that looks like, we have some ideas. We're moving forward on that. We, we believe in this. I mean, I've been asked, and again, ever since I've been in the district, people say, why all the new stuff? Why, we want to be able to say, this is our stuff. And this, we're just going to perfect it. We're going, it's developed already, but we're going to get better at rolling it out and, making it work. So we hope that this is what Carson City School District is recognized for around the state, around the nation, we hope. We believe we are on a pathway where we're being recognized at a, a national level. And we hope that our efforts will play out in, in all the right places. And, and we're confident that it will. So it's, it's really been an exciting thing for me, and I'm, I'm really glad that I've been able to be part of it.
Ron?
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, the playbook that you put together, I think is just excellent. You know, I went through this and, and I like, in Richard's opening letter, that these things resonate with a lot of people now. But let me just read this. "Society now expects workers at every level to demonstrate skill and creativity, problem-solving, and critical thinking." Jamie Volmer, in his book, Schools Cannot Do It Alone, said, "For the first time in history, our security, prosperity, and the health of our nation depend upon our ability to unfold the full creative potential of every child, not just the easy ones." I'll share with you, and I've gone out to the, with our community partners, businesses expect, yeah, you learn what needs to be done, but they always ask the question, keep in mind, for all of you students, we want you to think, how can you do it better, or what's next? And it's, it's exactly what is, is beginning to unfold and what, what you've got. And then when I go into your, it's on page thirteen, where you got your instructional attributes of a learner-centered classroom. And just these first, the belief in target. The teachers, teachers maintain a belief that all students can reach mastery or competency. Teachers develop, develop the lessons based on that. And teachers believe that the instructional success is measured, you know, but we're coming back to, it's the teachers' belief. And this is different, because when I go back to the easy one, some of the teachers that I talked to along these last five years said, we like the easy ones. We like to teach to the easy one. This is different. This takes a lot of effort, and it's a lot of worthwhile effort. Then you go into that, you know, the next, the relationship building. What I've found in talking to both students and teachers, when that relationship is built, there's some magic that happens. And like you said, it's not perfect, but once we start that mindset and moving that with, with those relationships, then, going down to the student learning. Students believe that they are capable to meet all the learning and performance requirements set before them. Students believe that teachers care about them. That is so important. We're not talking about, you know, somebody who wants a free ride. They're talking about, if people care, most of these students are going to do that work. So I'm just making a comment, love the playbook. I, well, I can't say enough good things about all the, the work that's been done, you know, through the years, from all the teachers, the implementation specialists, that's all, you know, this is hard. And still, I think probably some teachers would prefer to be in a classroom and shut the door and, and not do any more. But what is set here for the true learner-centered model, it, you're bringing up an entire community and the possibility of an entire nation with what you're doing, because we're not leaving the easy ones go. So anyway, just want to give that compliment again to you. Richard, you, the staff, the teachers especially, everybody's been involved.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Swirlik. And I really want to follow up that comment with, I really appreciate the fact that you did recognize, because it is our teachers and our administrators who built this program, and they all do need to deserve credit. Thank you for that.
And I just have a question. The playbook is, who is it being distributed to? Our staff and our personnel?
Yes. So everyone in our district will receive a copy of this, and we're working through the school support teams for each school to determine what's the best way to distribute on their campuses. But it's also going to be distributed to the U.S. Department of Education, and we're going to make sure that we put it on our website, and we want to open this up to anyone who's interested.
And I noticed ours says a draft, and I, I found several errors.
Perfect.
And before we distribute it to the Department of Education, I think educational documents should make sure that we don't have any of those errors in it. Anyway, just like for consistency, we see student learn, or student, the first letter says a student-centered learning system, but then we talk about it as a learner-centered. So that, and then the model and the system, is there a difference between what a model and a system is?
So we'll use those interchangeable, but I'm glad that you raised that. So we're building a glossary as well, so that we're going to include these things, so that they know that these terms are interchangeable. Thank you for bringing that up.
And then just to note, like, when you put a sentence inside parentheses, it still needs a period. It drove me crazy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm following, so I'm following the research protocol. So, so you and I are looking at different things. So I'm, I'm doing it the way that I was trained through, so I'm following the, the protocol that we use through research. So I can certainly make that adjustment if you would like.
Yeah, just, yeah. And I realize there are probably other people submitting things to write on it, but I'm going, oh, when we put this out, we can't, we can't misspell things. So having complete sense.
Yeah, so that's, yeah. So I, I get it. So we'll make the adjustments to more traditional English rather than the psychometric journals. It's okay. I can do that. Thank you. And thank you for that input.
Comments? Steve?
I'm glad that in this, you included that initial findings from the tour of Eagle Valley Middle School. And I mean, I noted certain things in there. Each teacher was functioning as an independent contractor, and teaching and learning opportunities varied greatly from class to class. We've known this to be true for years, you know. Were you going to get the good teacher, or were you going to get somebody who maybe wasn't as, quite as skilled for whatever reason? The students who were served by different teachers were not capable of defining, I paraphrase, but the expectations of their learning either. And tracking student, I won't go into any more of the quotes that underline, but, you know, as you read through that, I mean, and, you know, it's, it's fairly easy to see that it wasn't, it's not something that was just native to Eagle Valley Middle School by any means, as we know. And what I've really enjoyed in seeing the progress through this program is that we're getting so much closer, darn close, to being able to offer a good education to every student, no matter who's in front of the classroom or what grade they might be in. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions?
Steve, I just wanted to say thanks. I think this is, you know, obviously, it's come a long way, and it's been a lot of hard work by a lot of people. So it's, it's impressive. And I, I think what we're starting to see, because I've asked a question before, and when I'm understanding more, is kind of these steps we're getting to, where we're not only seeing success within the various grades within our district, but, you know, as, as the high school progresses onboard, and we start, you know, it starts branching out beyond the high school, and these, and these kids that are going on to higher education and whatnot, you know. So I'm curious, as the next two, three, four years go by, I think we'll start seeing more and more of that, because as you said, we're seeing increases in numbers within the district, which is great. And we want to keep building on that. And I think as we build on that, we're going to see it blossom up beyond us. So, so this, I think it's, I don't want to say we're on a good start, because we're past the start, but, you know, we are at the beginning stages, what I think can be fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. And thank you all for your support throughout this whole process. We would not be here without you as well. All right. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 11, informational update on staffing for the 2016-17 school year, including a report on the district's efforts to fill vacant positions. This is for discussion only, and the well-rested Dr. Delphin is here.
Well-rested, wow. Nobody's ever said that to me before. Thanks, President Cassioppo, trustees, and staff. Jose Delphin for the record. Wow, thank you, Steve. It's hard to follow that act. And as, as he was speaking, I was thinking back when I was teaching, how it was such a labor-intensive effort to even try to get a group of teachers together to agree on anything, to be honest with you. And now we're at the stage in our careers where that is an expectation, and it's, it's flowing. And it's not this, you know, adversarial thing. So I'm, I'm just really thrilled that I can live to see this day. So thank you, Steve. So today, as I was scrambling to get this report out to you, I just want to throw out some fun facts. From March 1st till today, I ran a report as far as our applicants. We've had, in the last few months, 1,545 online applications submitted. That's a heck of a lot of applications. And remember, we're pretty new to online apps. This is our fourth year. So it's growing by leaps and bounds exponentially each year. And it just still surprises me when I look at those numbers in just a few months. When I look at ethnicity, what I'm surprised is a lot of people don't want to report their ethnicity. It's an option. So they don't. Gender-wise, they do. For some reason, they're okay with that. So 1,108 females applied, about 296 males. No response. It was 124. Not sure what that means. And declined to identify were 16. So, anyway, so go females. They're proud to be there. And with regard to other fun facts, let me tell you where they're coming from, as far as in the nation. And this is by order from greatest to not-so-great as far as the number of hits. Nevada is number one. And that would make sense, that we have the most number of applicants in the state that we live in. Second to that would be California. Then oddly, third place is Texas. Yeah, who would have thought? And then on down the line to New Mexico, Washington, Colorado, Tennessee, I'm reading sideways, North Carolina, Maine, Illinois, Pennsylvania, Virginia, Alaska, Connecticut, Idaho, New York, Oregon, and Ohio. So, yeah, we are out there. So pretty cool stats. So as far as what we're trying to accomplish in hiring this year, it's been a pretty up-and-down recruiting season. And so I'd like to report out that we have hired over 50 people, and, and a lot of them are pending. So I would expect in the next pending, so I would expect in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be up to about 80 people that we've hired, from all ranks. That means classified nurses, of course, our new administrator at Empire, and teachers, of course. So that's a lot of people for our district. That's about 10% of what we have. We have close to about 900 people, about 870-ish. So we're hiring about 10%. And the turnover was interesting this year, as I looked at the ups and downs, we had really no retirements or resignations to speak of in March and April. Then whammo. Something burst, people got the PERS retirement crave, and we just got some last-minute folks that decided it was time. And I know, because in my office, they kind of, they step in like this, kind of look around and go, "I think I need to talk to Deanne about benefits." And we, I know that's the start of the conversation about, what do I do for the next step? And then they talk to Jolie about their payoffs, and they talk to me about their career stuff. So they make the circuit around HR, and they kind of kick the tires. So I know when that stage starts to happen. And it started to happen more around May and June. And then even last week, we hired somebody from, I believe, Douglas County, and then she reneged and went back. So it's been, it's been weird. I have no explanation for it. I don't know what the moon is doing, and what Venus and Mars are doing, but it's been very unpredictable. So with that, we hired about that many last year at this time, so we're on pace. But we still have some vacancies to be found. Let me just bring that up real quick. So vacancy-wise, and I'm going to start with teachers, because they have to meet students pretty quickly here, we have left 26 vacancies. Five of those are TOSSs, so those are grant-funded positions, and four of those TOSSs are STEM teachers for elementary. So they're, I think, going to be a little tough to find, to be honest. But that's the grant that Mrs. Dockery put together, and we have funding for, so we cast a net, and hopefully, somebody applies. Hard to fill. We have nine of those vacancies. That's math, science, English, special education. And that's our typical number. That's actually pretty low this year, to be honest with you. Nine. Typically have more than nine hard-to-fill positions, which leaves 12 regular positions. And that's a little higher than normal. So that's why I meant about this funky year. It didn't make any sense to me either, but the numbers are the numbers. We have two nurses left, one at Empire and Fritsch to hire. Oh, I do want to say, before I leave the teaching folks alone there, that we do have a few backup plans for some of these positions. For instance, the math teacher at Carson High, thank you to Sarah Lobzinger, our IS, and she's been just a great recruiter, and found a student teacher at UNR. And so we've kind of been the path of UNR students for math. And so we'll have somebody there, and she's phenomenal already. We do have a pretty good long-term sub for one of our really tough-to-hard-to-fill, which is a CLS position, severe and profound students. And we're trying to figure out how to license this person, so we're looking at creative ways to get them licensed. And a culinary teacher that Mrs. Fuson found, I don't know where this person came from, but this person's going to serve as a long-term sub, and see how this person does. We didn't have a lot of applicants, actually, we did. We had one from Washoe, and then he reneged. I don't know. Doesn't make sense. But nevertheless, we have a plan for the culinary position, and we know that's a hot potato position for our district. It's really tough to follow Penny. I mean, let's just face it. Hard to keep up with her, too. So we do have some plans for some of these folks, as far as vacancies. And then, like I said, two nurses, one at Empire and Fritsch to fill, we do have subs in line for them. We have about 18 classified staff to fill. Most of them are paraprofessionals. I can tell you, they're tough to find as well, and we've searched high and low. I've talked about Dr. Austin, you know, ensuring that she's involved with ESL parapro hiring, and she's found some creative ways to have people succeed. Coaches, we have eight of them, from middle to high school. And then, and the regular vacancies that we have are substitute folks, like substitute nurses, cook-bakers, crossing guards, custodians, special ed aides, and also just substitute teachers. And we have those year-round. We don't close out. So we typically have that run of six, a half a dozen of those types of openings all the time. Sub pool looks good, actually. That I can report. It didn't look good last year at this time, but this year, we're looking pretty good. And that's pretty much the report. I actually thought it would be worse than I anticipated. I know it doesn't sound great, but I thought with the decline of folks entering college to become teachers, and I experienced this when I went out recruiting and also talked to my peers, not just statewide, but in other states that I have friends with, and they are, you know, they're singing a different blue out there. You've probably heard of Washoe, and Clark County is always bad to find teachers with. There's, they're in the thousands. I don't even know how they do it, to be honest. So they're going to have a lot more long-term subs than anybody else. With that, I can tell you, the seasoned substitutes that we do have know the race at the top, know the SFA, they're going to be ready to step in at a moment's notice, so I can say we have some of the best subs in our pool that I've ever seen. Pretty dedicated folks. So all told, like, I can tell you, you know, it's really fun to be in education, but as you all know, sitting where you are, we're just ordinary people trying to do extraordinary things. And it gets tougher to do these extraordinary things as these teacher shortages become ever-present. So with that, I have online website recruitment in over 200 colleges that point right to our website. I dropped Teacher Teachers, because we didn't get a lot of hits with them, and I enlisted another online education recruitment site called Education America, and they've actually been a lot better than Teacher Teachers. They've helped us, I think, in more ways than most sites. So I'm always looking for ways to get out there and do our reach. And certainly, I think, much to the credit, again, of Dr. Prudair and his team, is that we're getting known around the state for what we do, and people are coming in to try to figure out a different way, and a better way to teach and make a living here, whether you want to be a parapro, or a teacher, or administrator. I think the bell has rung, and we're leading. It has a double-edged sword, though. It does mean a lot more work, but also means it's a lot more satisfaction. So folks are talking about what we're doing, and in a very positive way. So with that, I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Do we, do we still have a regulation that says that out-of-state folks, we only acknowledge up to five years of experience for their time?
Pretty much, yeah. However, I do say, we try to match their salary, too. So wherever they left off, we're, we tried to make sure they're at least making that much, if not higher, when they come to District Trustee Green, so they're not losing money.
Is that kind of a consistent policy for states across the country?
Not that I know about, Mr. Reynolds. Nevada, for sure. I've been from Clark to Elko, we're all doing the same thing.
Jose, going back to you, to your numbers for the online applications, 1,545, and we were only able to hire 80 people, maybe, not even, probably from, exclusively from the online applications.
Sure, sure. Great question. Yeah, so out of those people, a lot of them shop. So one of the disadvantages of online is they do shop. Does that mean? No. Okay, good. It's kind of like Amazon, so they do a mass spread of their applications, not just here. But we have the same system as Lyon County, White Pine, and other districts. So once they hit Carson, they can hit Lyon County, they can hit other districts around the nation, we're connected nationally. So a lot of them gets, they can kind of, like I said, shop for the best market, especially if you're a hard-to-fill teacher. The most mobile teachers that we have, Mr. Sorezic, I'll get to the answer, too, are sped teachers. So they can pretty much go wherever they want to go. So out of the 1,545, we managed to hire the number that we have. But also remember, there's a process by which not everybody fills out the application completely. So some of them don't complete the application, some of them don't respond to any of our inquiries to make sure they complete the application, some don't have resumes or even transcripts, let's say, for teachers that are necessary. And then, once they, they get screened, and they are not felons, we've got to say that out loud, because we don't want them in our district, then they go out to the principals for review. So I would say, out of the 1,500 or so, I would just estimate a third, probably, get to our principals, who have passed all our qualification requirements, and then the principals get to decide who they want to hire. And it's really up to them at that point.
Dr. Delphin, as far as the efficiency of our process, I mean, do we, are we pretty efficient in our resume? We're getting it from the computer screen to the principals to selection, or would you say we're pretty efficient, or could we speed it up a little bit? Does that have an impact?
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Cassioppo. Yes and no. I think the efficiency lies between the district and also the applicant. So we're efficient in making sure that that resume isn't 10 years old, because obviously, nobody wants to look at something that old, or a letter of reference that's over five years old. So when we see those things, we've got to let the applicant know, hey, you know, you got anything more recent? You know, because, you know, it's kind of stale. So we make sure that we're doing our job to keep the freshest information and the most viable people, and the best people for our students. And that's a tough job for my people to do, because they've got to look at every app. And that's, as you know, working on a computer every day, you're looking at thousands by now, and you're making sure every, everything's up to snuff. And that's really what takes the longest, is making sure that we've got good screeners. And it took us a while to really catch some of the things that we didn't catch in the first year. We're better at it now, we're faster at it now. The principals also catch things we don't catch, so it's still a human process. So I can tell you, it's not as efficient as it's going to get, to be honest. Yeah.
I know, one of the Department of Ed meetings I was at, they talked about the colleges were there, and they're looking at, they're doing a pilot program in Washoe and Clark to have a CTE program in the high schools for education, to grow those within.
Yeah.
Because there were, because their numbers have dropped so much, so I kind of think that that might be something that we might want to look at, too, is just to start homegrowing our own applicants.
Yes, and we have talked about that in our executive team meetings, to start a teacher academy. It is our industry, we should be able to grow a few. I agree.
Any additional questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Dr. Phelps?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item 12, approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted. Second.
Motion second by Trustee Hart. Any discussion? Concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, informational items for discussion only. Any...
Will we begin dates for, like, open houses and stuff like that soon? Okay, thanks.
Yes, I believe that those, we're compiling a list, and maybe most of it is done already. Yeah, thank you, Renee. Silly me to even question that. But I know, I know we've asked, even from early in the summer, to get those dates, and I think they are available on the webpage. Thank you.
How about item 14, request for future agenda topics? Ryan?
I'd like to, I'll either, I'll work with Mr. Stokes and see if they have any flavor on changing that regulation, or if not, I would like to bring up that policy that corresponds with that regulation, to make sure that we're not putting an arbitrary time limit on experience for people. Because I'd hate for somebody to have that even as a perceived barrier. If we're flying all over the country to recruit teachers and trying to get our name out, we shouldn't, we shouldn't not acknowledge all of their experience, so.
Good enough. Any additional future agenda topics? Ron?
I'd like to, just to begin a discussion on moving forward with having, other than English taught, from pre-K on. We have enough evidence that a language, or a foreign language, would be best learned at an early age. And I think it's time, based upon what Laura presented, you know, we always talk about the English language learners, but maybe it's time for French language learners, for Hispanic, or Spanish language learners, Mandarin, just to start a discussion of why we don't do this at the early age of starting the pre-K. I'd like to let this unfold.
Any others? All right, seeing none, this meeting's adjourned.